And I'm going to call the meeting to order and we will start with consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve just the resolution declaring November's Municipal Works Month.
My second.
Does that, does that mean you're, you want to discuss the minutes?
There are no minutes.
Why is it on?
I didn't have the minutes ready for this meeting by Thursday, so I just told them that I would have it ready for the next meeting.
By the way, before we take the vote, before I call for the vote with the town manager, I'm sorry, I forgot this, with the town manager, please read the disclaimer.
Yes, as a reminder to folks, we are recording these meetings and posting them on the town website. So we ask that if you have any questions or comments, you use the raise hand feature on Zoom and I can then indicate to you your place in line and the mayor will call on you for comments. Yes, the comments keep to two minutes and please state your name and address before your comment so that we have it for the record. And finally, if for some reason this meeting gets interrupted in a way that we cannot continue, we will stop the meeting and send out a new invitation for people to rejoin.
Do you also want to talk about how the, for the public comment period, how people will be called on?
Sure, yes. So if, if you use the raise hand feature on Zoom, I can then privately chat you and let you know that I've received your, received your wish to make comments and then we will unmute you and give you an opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you. Before I call for further discussion on the consent agenda, let me remind Matt that if there is a change to the agenda, such as this minor one, that we should reproduce the agenda for the public because I missed that. Okay, is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, thank you. Now we will move to the public comment period. Mr. Town Manager, has anyone indicated they wish to make a comment?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, thank you. We will now move to a motion, hearing motion to consider approval of a three-month permit extension as requested by Mimi Kress and Spring Builders on behalf of Lance and Meredith Wade for the ongoing construction project at the property located at 4917 Essex Avenue, Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, I believe Mimi Kress is on with us here, but this is a request for, as the mayor said, the building construction at 4917 Essex Avenue. As indicated in the email that I shared with the council, the permit was initially granted in October of last year, on October 18th, and the permit expires on October, excuse me, November 18th of this year. And the applicant is requesting a three-month permit extension. The reason for that is some slight slowdowns due to pandemic, construction during the pandemic time and some delays in material delivery and availability. The vast majority of the construction is finished on the house. The remaining work to be done has to do with, I believe, the pool and interior work primarily, but I will turn it over to Mimi Kress if she has any other comments. So Mimi, if you want to go ahead.
Is she, is she on? I don't, by the way, Mr. Town Manager, I think we had a talk about this. Has everyone in the participant list identified themselves? Are you aware of all these numbers?
Believe there's one that I think is Mimi. Let's see, Mimi, I believe if you push star six, you can unmute yourself on the phone.
Is that her, the 908?
That's what I thought. That's Doug. Oh, it is.
Doug is listed twice then.
Actually, Doug on my screen is listed under Steve.
On mine too.
Okay, I'm going to call, let me call Mimi and see if she's available.
Steve, Halloween is over. You can't be Doug anymore.
Steve has listed his phone number on mine.
She's writing, hold on a second. Why don't you sign in just in case there's a question? Okay, okay. Ms. Brodsky Kress is signing in. In the meantime, Council President Shaw, do you have any questions of the town manager? Thank you, Councilmember Zoe Hazer.
No, thank you.
Councilmember Peel.
No questions.
Councilmember Circo.
No questions.
Councilor Barr.
No questions on this one.
Mr. Town Manager, are there comments or questions? Has anybody raised their hand?
No, I did not receive any comments.
Thank you, Council.
Here's, here's, here's Mimi Brodsky Kress.
Okay, there's, Ms. Kress, there's no, there's no, I don't believe there are any questions. Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
I move that we approve a three-month permit extension for the property located at 4917 Essex Avenue.
Is there a second? Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kress for attending. The next item, hearing motion to consider approval of a building permit by Jason, please tell me the extension of your last name.
Rsay.
Rsay.
Yes.
Thank you. Jason Rsay with Anthony Wilder Design Build on behalf of Jim Bellicov and Vanessa Piala for a new one-story rear addition and wheelchair accessibility ramp at the property located at 4811 Cumberland Avenue. And also, sir, can you mute everybody because I'm getting some feedback here?
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I dropped off on your desk the mayor's statement for this application.
I thought you, you only dropped out the one for 4818. Oh, is it the wrong address?
Maybe I put the wrong address on there. I apologize.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I was, I.
I'm sorry about that.
No problem. All right, today is November 2nd, 2020. This is a hearing before the Town of Somerset Council for Permit Application Number 20-11-2C to consider approval of a building permit application for the removal of the existing rear porch and replacing with a one-story addition. In addition, the applicants are seeking a ramp on the side of the house for wheelchair accessibility. We ask that residents be limited to one comment each and that they be limited to two minutes at a time. The town manager will call on residents by listed name or the last four digits of the phone number if no name is provided. When you speak, please state your name and street before you make your comment. When your time is up, a buzzer will sound and you will be asked to please finish your thought. The hearing will observe the following order. The Somerset Town staff will present their findings and submit for the record a report of the, on the application under consideration. Second, the applicant will present their application. Third, the Somerset Town Council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff relevant to the application at hand. Next, other interested parties will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or present comments to the council. If necessary, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony, after which the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the record closed. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusions. The council may make a motion on a permit decision. If any opposition is presented, the town attorney will be asked to write a decision and a permit shall not be issued before the expiration of 30 days to allow time for an appeal. If no opposition is presented, the town manager will be asked to issue a permit. We now begin the hearing with the presentation of the Somerset staff findings and reports. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as the mayor mentioned, the applicants Vanessa Piala and Jim Bellicov are applying for a building construction permit for a rear addition and wheelchair ramp on the side of the house. The applicant's builder Jason Rsay of Anthony Wilder Design Build Incorporated approached the town in July of 2020 to begin preliminary discussions on the building application. The applicant sought a permit with Montgomery County Historic Preservation Commission and received approval at its August 12th, 2020 meeting. And a Montgomery County building permit was granted on October 7th, 2020. A completed application was submitted to the Town of Somerset the following day on October 8th, and a tree protection plan was finalized by Town Arborist Dr. Tolbert Feather on October 21st. On Wednesday, October 28th, the applicant indicated that they wished to apply for a retaining wall permit. The town building administrator Doug Lohmeyer had already reviewed the retaining wall reconstruction and determined that the retaining wall complied with the town building code regulations. However, a tree reforestation plan was not able to be completed in time for consideration at this meeting. The applicants will submit a new permit application with neighbor signatures indicating that they have had a chance to review send plans. The town did receive one comment in email form in relation to this property, which I have uploaded into the Google Drive form for the council. And I'll just read it. It's relatively short. This is from Jamie Kaplan, who, and, excuse me, Jamie Kaplan and Russell Green, who I believe are with us at this meeting, who live at 4813 Cumberland Avenue. They wrote, "I'm writing to express concerns over the proposed building permit for 4811 Cumberland Avenue. I live downhill and next door at 4813 Cumberland. To my knowledge, there is currently no analysis of the impact on water drainage or plan in place to address water drainage resulting from the renovation on the property and how it will be managed. We would appreciate if Jason Rsay could provide such analysis and plans. Jim and Vanessa are wonderful neighbors and we are not opposed to them renovating, but want to be proactive and have water issues addressed in advance of any potential negative impacts. We have spoken to Jim and Vanessa about our concerns and they are amenable to this being addressed and implemented, but currently there is no such plan in place. We did reach out to their architect but have not received any information." With that, I will turn it over to our town building administrator Doug Lohmeyer for his report.
Good evening. The applicants have submitted an application to remove the existing porch and to construct a new addition at the rear of the existing house. They also propose to install a handicap ramp on the right side of the house, make design of life compliant changes to the interior of the house, install a new HVAC unit, a dumpster and a temporary toilet will be located on the lot. Parking plan was submitted showing three vehicles parked on the north side of Cumberland in front of the property. The proposed addition at the rear is set back 52.5 feet from the rear property line, 30.2 feet from the right property line, and approximately 45 feet from the left property line. All setbacks exceed the minimum setback required in the town. The height of the proposed addition is approximately 15 feet, which conforms to the town code. The area of the lot is 15,563 square feet and the proposed addition is 3,141 square feet, which is 20.2% of the lot coverage, which is below the maximum building coverage allowed. The proposed air conditioning unit will be located at the rear of this house under the deck. I recommend the council approve the applicant's application for a building permit, a demolition permit, a dumpster permit, and an HVAC permit. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Lohmeyer. And now if the applicants wish to make an opening statement or comment on the report or present anything that they'd like to, now's your opportunity, please identify yourself.
Thank you. This is Jason Rsay, the architect with Anthony Wilder Design Build. Good evening, everyone. I just quickly wanted to just emphasize, I guess, what's already been said. It's, this is a, a master suite addition off of the back of the house. The main purpose of the, of the project was to go for the design for life, you know, wheelchair accessibility for our clients and, and make it easier, safer, as the title says, you know, designed for life, so. As far as Ms. Kaplan's comments first, as far relating to water, water management, we will follow county guidelines and with the silt fences around the project, the addition, any, any areas we are impacting. The, the addition is on the right side of the house. We do not, with a flat backyard, we do not, we do not believe we're going to be coming close to the left-hand side of the house. I don't see anything happening on, you know, with that, with water. That aspect, if anything, we're trying to help out the Bellicov Pialas with water issues on, on their right side of the house. So yeah, I don't know if there, I wasn't required to have a stormwater management plan for the size of the project. We're pretty much keeping the size, as we, they mentioned earlier, we are removing a rear porch and pretty much placing the master suite in its location. So we are only adding, I believe, 600 square feet to, to the, to the house. That's, that's about it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rsay. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions? You need to unmute, you need to unmute. Thank you.
So I'm looking at the drawing, Mr. Rsay, and so currently there are three downspouts on the left side of the property that go downhill. Is that correct?
I believe that is correct, yes.
And did, was the downspout closest to the rear of the property, was that picking up water from the existing rear porch?
It was not. There's a separate, yeah, there's a separate downspout on the right-hand side of the house.
That was picking that up?
Yes.
Okay, so essentially you're saying there's going to be the same amount of water coming from the property after the renovation as there is currently?
That is correct.
That side of the property?
Correct, yes.
Do you know if there, there's currently some flooding from those downspouts?
Not from the left side of the house. It's more on the right side, directly on the right side. They, they are having issues with their, with their neighbors' property having water issues there, which is part of what we're going to try to reapply for the retaining wall. We've had some damage to that wall and would like to reconstruct that wall and better drainage system there.
So you're willing to affirm that you are not going to be changing the amount of water that goes from the left side of the property to the, onto the property at 4813 Cumberland?
Yes, that is correct.
I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Zoe Hazer. You were muted. I assume you don't have any questions. Thank you. Councilmember Peel.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Circo.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Barr. You need to mute, sir. Unmute. Thank you, sir. Not yet. No, 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 we can't hear you. There you go. Thank you.
Question I don't know the answer to. In previous small construction, there was a drainage plan associated with it, which is to do with water traveling to the neighbors. Unlike a stormwater management plan, which is meant to be more general and about retaining water on your property. As far as I can see, there is no drainage plan on the materials that we received. Because this would not need a drainage plan is really the question.
Is that for the town attorney or for Doug?
Well, the architect, I think, should know the answer.
Okay, thank you. Sir, Mr. Rsay.
Yes, it was not necessary. Like I mentioned before, we are, for the most part, replacing an existing rear porch. So the footprint, we are, we've only added about 600 square feet to the, to the house and therefore no, not, not needed.
So that didn't trigger a drainage plan?
It did not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest raised their hand?
Sorry, no, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. So given that there was no public comment, there is no need for rebuttal, so this concludes the public portion of the hearing. The record is now closed. The council now, are you, council, are you prepared to make a motion? Marty, I think you need to talk closer to the, thank you.
I move that the council approve the applicant's application for a building permit, a demolition permit, a dumpster permit, and an HVAC permit at 4811 Cumberland Avenue.
Thank you. Is there a second? I see Zoe Hazer, Councilor Zoe Hazer. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, thank you. This concludes the public hearing and all part, all parties will be notified and written, well, no. That's it, right, Mr. Town Attorney?
That's right, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations to the applicant. The next item, hearing motion to approve side overplacement by AB Veers and Sons Incorporated at 4731 Surrey Street, 4806 and 4814 Grantham Street, and 5525 Grayson Street in an amount not to exceed $5,000. Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, Mike Veers of AB Veers is planning to join us, but we're a little bit ahead of schedule, so he's not with us quite yet, but I can give some background and counsel.
Yes, let's start and see.
Yeah, yeah.
Run through.
So, um, as you may remember, in September, Precision Concrete Cutting did grinding, about $20,000 worth of grinding on various spots throughout town, on sidewalk areas that had been displaced or, or were otherwise uneven. There were four leftover sidewalk areas that were still uneven and that Precision Concrete said they did not recommend further grinding because essentially if you continue to grind it, the concrete gets too thin, so then the concrete is more susceptible to cracking and breaking, causing, causing further issues. So we went back to the drawing board a little bit. I got some samples of material from a company called Perky pave, which is a permeable pavement, concrete replacement material that's made of rubber. And I asked Dr. Feather, who is with us, to take a look at the site to see if it would be a good, a good candidate for this material. Talking to Doug and Tolbert, they had worked together on another, with another municipality to actually put this type of material down. And when Dr. Feather looked at it, he essentially said, and Tolbert, feel free to jump in and correct me if I'm misstating anything, but that the way that the tree roots grew, it would still create a bump in the sidewalk that would make it really no better than what exists. And Tolbert looked at the tree and determined that just replacing the concrete slabs in those areas would not do significant amount of damage to the root of those trees and therefore simply replacing them and cutting the roots at those areas would be the better long-term solution to deal with any misalignment of the sidewalk. Do I have that right, Tolbert?
Yes, that's it. That's true.
And so AB Veers is doing work at two other nearby municipalities. And so we were able to piggyback off of those contracts and essentially get a discount on, because, and anytime these companies come in, they charge you, they have sort of a flat fee for the price of the concrete or the materials, but then they charge you kind of a fee on top of that to, to activate the contract and get onsite. And because they're, they're there, we aren't having to pay that portion of it. And so that's, that's what the council has before them, a proposal from AB Veers to fix those spots. And the other, the other benefit of them being in the area is that they'll be able to take care of it before it gets too cold and winter, winter comes upon us.
Okay, thank you. So in anticipation of the arrival of the representative from AB Veers, I'll take questions from the council for the town manager. Madam President, do you have any questions of the town manager?
I am very, very appreciative of his being able to get a contractor who's close by and who can do this work soon because I think these have been hazardous squares. So thank you very much, Matt.
And would you, will you have any questions for AB Veers? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Zoe Hazer.
I don't have any questions for AB Veers, but I also want to thank Matt for finishing up this project so well. I think the grinding has been a huge success in town and it'll be nice to get these last few places taken care of. So thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Peel.
I think it all sounds good. The only thing I would suggest is that I don't know how long it will take before it can happen, that the concrete is replaced. I would suggest in the meantime that we need to reapply that fluorescent paint because it's totally faded away in a few of the places that are still problematic. And I was walking, you know, just the other day and noticed that one of the really big ones on Surrey near Dorset is the fluorescent paint has totally faded and it makes it really hard with the leaves on it and everything to really see it. So I think, you know, even just taking care of that.
Can you respond to that, please?
Yes, yeah, thank you. We actually talked about that last week and so we ordered some glow-in-the-dark fluorescent paint to put on there, so hopefully it should be visible during nighttime as well, a little bit.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Circo.
Yeah, I'd just like to second what Barbara was saying about thanks to the, the town manager and our town arborist for reviewing this and just dealing with it expeditiously. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Barr.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Matt and Tolbert. It, it looks very much like you're going to be able to replace them before the possibility of ice arrives and that's, that's good and important that we can do that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there any questions from our residents or guests or comments?
No, there are not.
So council, are you prepared to make a motion even though you haven't had a chance to? Talked to the, the question about the timing, Matt will get back to you on once the contracts approved. Matt will get back to you on once the contract's approved. So are you prepared to make a motion, Council?
I move that we approve sidewalk replacement by A.B. Veers &amp; Sons on Surrey and Grantham and Graystone on the places that have been identified by the town in an amount not to exceed $5,000.
Thank you. Is there a second? I see Zoe Hauser first. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you very much. The next item, and Mr. Town Manager, is the gentleman here, the gentlelady from Mason Lee Resurfacing and Construction Company?
He just emailed me about 15 minutes ago to say that she was planning to hop on at 7:45 or 7:50 if we wanted to wait.
Well, we will move on. You know, why don't we take this opportunity, since we don't like to jump ahead more than 20 minutes, let's go to item number, the 905 item, the introduction of the resolution with the code amendments. And I will turn that over to Council President Shaw.
That Councilmember Peel is going to be doing this?
Okay, thank you.
Well, I just made a few notes from what Ron wrote. I don't have the details of it in front of me on my computer, but this ordinance, and I'm really quoting straight from Ron's write-up, is intended to fix some administrative changes and changing vice president to president, clarifying the creation of committees, clarifying the definition of a lot, amending the procedures for appeals, and deleting unnecessary provisions and amending and clarifying other existing provisions. That's all I have.
Mr. Town Attorney, is that the introduction?
Yes, we just need a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Council President Shaw, did you wish to make the... Who's going to make the motion?
Councilmember Peel is going to make the motion.
I'm happy to make the motion. I thought you wanted me to explain what it was. I move that we introduce the ordinance to amend the code for the matters that I just outlined.
Excuse me, didn't we introduce this last time?
No, this is our first introduction of it, I believe.
That's right.
Does this require a vote?
Yes, it does, Mr. Mayor.
So is there a...
Motion that we approve the introduction of this ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those...
Marty is raising her hand. I don't know if that's...
Seconded. That's all.
Okay.
Hearing none. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. So now this is in the hands of the... We will agendize to...
And I will write an article for you.
Yeah, and if I could just add, Mr. Mayor, now that this has been formally introduced, it will be doctored for a public hearing comment period, and I will tomorrow send a copy to the county council for its comments. Under state law, when we amend our building regulations, we need to give the county council a 30-day comment period before we have our public hearing. So I'll do that tomorrow.
Are we going to be able to meet that deadline if our meeting is December 1st?
Okay, well, we will...
No, yeah, so that is not... But your meeting's the 7th.
Oh, I'm sorry. My mistake.
Well, we will have this on, when the council president, I mean, with the town manager, we will talk about the agendizing this. And now I note that we are still a little bit ahead. So let's move to the building administrators' report, because I think Mr. Loemeyer is on the phone.
Just a few things to go over tonight. The building permit for 5800 deal was approved last month, the extension, which will be good through January 5th. At 4712 Essex, the roof has been installed. We have requested a height survey that should be coming to us soon, and work is progressing on the project. At 5508 Uppingham, they are installing the shingles on the roof now. And as soon as the shingles are installed, we'll be requesting a height survey for that project. And you all just approved the extension for 4917 Essex tonight. On the spreadsheet for the projects, there was some confusion on the contractor for 4712 and 4809. It was switched, and then somebody switched it back, so it was against which today. So the correct copy should say 4712 is Paramount, and 4809 Grantham is Demare and Day. So that's been corrected, and that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
I think maybe there's a typo with the last items addressed. I think that's 5504 Graystone. It's near the intersection with River, isn't it?
I'm sorry, where are you?
The very last item on the sheet, Doug, where it says 5514 Graystone. Is that 5504 Graystone?
On the spreadsheet or on my report?
Spreadsheet. I don't have your report. I just have the spreadsheet.
I don't even have that on my spreadsheet.
It's, yeah, it's a typo. I think I made a typo on that, so I'm sorry.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Zoe Hauser.
I'm just looking. I'm looking up an address. Doug, are you aware of the work that's being done at 5411 Trent Street?
Not off the top of my head. Do you know what they're doing?
You might want to do a swing-by next time you're in town.
I'll be there tomorrow. What is it, 5411?
Yeah, 5411 Trent.
Okay, I'll go by tomorrow and look at it.
Great. Many thanks.
All right.
Is that it, Councilmember?
That's it. Thank you so much, Doug.
Thank you, Councilmember Peel.
No questions for Doug.
Thank you, Councilmember Circo.
I was just going to ask the same question that Barbara did about the property on Trent. Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay. I didn't notice anything this morning, but I'll check it tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Barr. No questions? Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, has the representative arrived?
No, not yet.
Okay, I'm going to move to item, the 8 o'clock item. Hearing motion to consider approval of the fall tree planting schedule as recommended by the town arborist.
I actually, Jeffrey, I think people... I understand that people might be coming to that, and they'll be here at 8. For the managers' report, we never really have much time for that, and it's...
Okay, we will move to the manager's report.
Okay. Thank you. So I didn't create a budget report. I just figured that the quarterly review would sort of stand in for that at this meeting and didn't want to bog us down with too many numbers, I guess, in one meeting. But there are a few budgetary updates. We've been working with the auditors, have most of the stuff ready. They're finishing up, I think, some of the things on our not-main accounts. So our regular checking account, and the one that we pull most of the checks through has been completed. So I expect them to be able to present at the December meeting. We're arranging for them to meet with our auditing committee ahead of time as well to go over their findings, processes, and any questions that the audit committee might have with them. So should get a report from the auditors and a report from the audit committee at the next meeting.
Matt, I'm the liaison to the audit committee.
Let's wait. Let's let him do his report, then we'll get questions.
We have had a couple of meetings with the budget committee in preparation for tonight, including meeting with the state comptrollers office. And I believe part of Phil's presentation will go over that, but that sort of went over some of the financial ramifications of the COVID pandemic and how that might affect financials in Somerset specifically. We have created some of those higher-yield savings accounts that we had talked about a while ago. Since we talked about it, obviously, the savings, the yield on the savings account is not as high as we were hoping, but they're still higher than what we're essentially functioning as checking accounts before in Capital One, where at least now in a bona fide savings account, so accruing real interest on that, even if it's not quite as high as maybe we had hoped before the rates started to go down because of the pandemic. We already talked about the tripping hazards this evening. And I just wanted to give a quick update on the town pool. The pool attendance did dip in September and October. We had about 40 people per day in October, but we had steady attendance at the early morning swim and the aerobics classes. And then there were, I would say, probably 10 to 25 people that showed up almost every day in the after-school hours. So it was steady, if not as well-attended as previously in the summer. The biggest day we had was the very first day that the pool opens, and the second biggest was the last day of the pool, actually. So there was a spike on the final day, in part because of the dog swim. But it certainly went, July was the highest, then August it dipped a little bit as maybe people went out of town. Then September, as people started to get into school and the weather got a little bit cooler. And then in October, we had kind of our diehards that went regularly, but otherwise attendance was down a little bit. But I will say, I got a few emails and comments from folks that I'm happy to share with the council, but just thanking the town, thanking the council for extending the pool season, saying that it was nice for their kids and for them to have something to do. So I think that went well. We got our contract sent in just today, actually, from American Pool for the extension. So we're going to talk about that at a pool management meeting and sort of play it by ear, in part how the closing down goes. We did get some blinds, shades for the town hall, which the council approved. So we have the temporary shades in place right now. And I believe when they were approved in mid-October, they had indicated that it would be about three to four weeks before they would be able to come in. So I'd say probably in mid-November, we should get them to come in and put up the blinds. Couple of contracting updates. Ray Brothers did come through last week a couple of times and are coming through now, starting this week, to begin doing leaf vacuuming throughout town. So if anybody has any questions about that or comments or notices, any big piles that need special attention, feel free to pass that along to the office, and I can then in turn pass it along to Ray Brothers. They don't follow any particular schedule in terms of street per day or anything. They kind of do ride-bys every day and try to judge it on where the leaves are really piled up and try to hit everybody fairly equally and regularly. As I mentioned with the pool contract, last year we approved a one-year contract with some option years. So our contract runs through this off-season, and we'll have an update at a later meeting in terms of recommendations for picking up the option years with American Pool or taking other action. Composting, I wanted to give an update that's not on my report. I spoke with compost crew about some of the chatter on the various listservs about missed pickup because apparently the crews have tomorrow off for Election Day and sort of without warning decided that they were going to pick up Saturday instead. They are going to come through on Thursday for anybody that got missed on Saturday and didn't get the message or anything. So I'm going to send out a message tomorrow that lets people know if yours didn't get picked up, put it back out for Thursday, and they've assured that they'll come back through. And then we've ordered the dog waste donations for Founder's Park and on the corner of Trent Street. Couple of gardening landscaping updates. I spoke with Kelly O'Klessen last week, and they are finalizing an O&amp;M manual, and she was sick last month, so had to postpone her meeting with our maintenance staff, but we've rescheduled for this month. So she's going to go with them and talk about some of the good strategies and making recommendations for the various spots that we've identified throughout town. Tonight, as the mayor mentioned, the council has before them the fall tree planting schedule, so Tolbert will go out over that. In terms of leaf blowers, there's been talk about town-wide, but in terms of with the town hall, we've ordered leaf blowers. Honestly, I expected them a couple of weeks ago, and I'm checking in every couple of days with Stroh Snyder's. Apparently, they were backordered, so there's some missing parts. So just standing by and giving them a call two or three times a week until we finally get that. But we should have those sometime within the next couple of weeks, I'm hoping. Let's see. Town directory, we've finished putting that together, so we're going to send that out this week. And we talked about the permit applications at our work session. So I'm working on a redraft based on your feedback, so we can look at that again at our November work session and hopefully make that nice so that maybe even in December, we could take some action on that. Still looking into the website stuff so that if it turns out that we get the money, we have something in our back pocket to be able to update the website. I know Councilmember Shaw attended a social media presentation at the MML conference that was enlightening about what different municipalities are doing, what's the most effective use of social media and connecting with residents. And I think that's been shared with the council as well, and we shared with the communications committee, and I know that they were passing that around, and I'll take a look at that as well. So as the year goes by, as we get a better handle on the budget, I think we've sort of identified that as an area that if we find the money for it, we're ready for it, basically. A couple of meeting updates that I've touched on here, but don't have written out. The mayor and I are working on a couple of meetings with the principal of Somerset Elementary and with the district... and with the District Two Commander and Montgomery County Police Chief. In terms of the the police meeting, we kind of hope to have something similar to the Pepco hearing, an opportunity for residents to hear directly from them about crime statistics in Somerset, coverage in Somerset, coverage throughout Montgomery County, follow-up on some of the issues that have been reported on, and I think it's good to have data on a lot of those things in terms of what was reported, what can they then report back to us? What what are they doing for coverage and sort of give residents a clear idea of how police coverage works in Somerset, because as as the council knows, we have some supplemental police officers, but the vast majority of our police coverage is really handled by Montgomery County Police. And the last the last couple, last thing I'll I'll touch on before I take any questions is I closed out the job posting for the archiving assistant, and we received about ten or so applications that were that weren't just kind of spam junkie. So I started reaching out today to set up some interviews, and hopefully in the next week or so, we'll have a candidate identified, and and we can introduce them to you all and and get them on board.
Okay, thank you, sir. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
I mean, I could spend a lot of time asking questions. I certainly appreciate this very detailed report. It's awfully good to have it. I'll let Robin ask the question about audit, but I'm the backup for Robin, so I'll be interested in that one. In the signage inventory, I did send you the minutes, and the traffic committee is willing to do the comparison so that we don't have to use our staff for that. At least that's what they said in their minutes. The compost crew told me they were coming back on Wednesday. I think I'm just going to put my bucket out Tuesday night and hope they get it at some point. The dog waste bin, one of them, as you know, is at the pool. It's not Founder's Park.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Jeffrey put that one in a long time ago. Thrive Montgomery, you haven't circulated Todd Hoffman's email yet, have you, Matt?
The one that he sent to you today?
Yes.
No, I have not.
Let me just say, Matt will send it around. People over in the town of Chevy Chase have done a fabulous job reviewing and analyzing Thrive Montgomery 2050. The the email that Matt will send around has an attachment which is three or four pages long, which is a fabulous analysis of the document and which should give you pause about what what things might be going forward. We are invited to participate, but they only want two people from each municipality. I'm going to go, and I would love to have company, so if somebody else would like to go, it's Wednesday night, I think it's seven, but Matt will send that around shortly. Did Ray Brothers come today at all? I never saw them in town.
I didn't I didn't talk to them today. I didn't see them, so I'm not entirely sure.
Why don't I stop there and give other people a chance to ask questions?
Thank you, because our we have our our next visitor is here now, Councilmember Zoig Hauser.
Oh, you're still muted.
You're muted.
I want to echo Marnie's sentiments. This was so helpful, Matt, to have such a detailed report. You know, Marnie's the one that goes to the meetings with you and Jeffrey, so she's aware of so much that goes on, but for me, I'm not, and I really got a lot out of reading this.
I'm sorry if there were a few typos in there.
I mean, it was it was terrific. A couple of questions. Is there going, and this is a question, is there going to be a plaque on the dog waste bin that was donated by Kelly and Kabir?
Oh, I don't think we had ordered a plaque for that one. I can talk to them if I didn't.
I mean, since the mayor donates has two that are donated, and he has two plaques, I think we should at least offer to to do that. I don't know if they're interested in it, but I think, and there's also the other one that was donated on Cumberland Avenue has a plaque on it as well.
I had actually, we I went back and forth with Kelly and Kumar for a while on that one, because I there was a little bit of wires crossed. I didn't realize that they were just donating a dog waste bin there. I had thought it was going to be a covered trash can. And so we we went through the whole process of buying, looking at different covered trash can options, and they finally said, no, really, we just want that same thing that you put in right by the pool. We just want a place to put the dog poop bags, and so.
Was that, what was approved as the gift?
A covered waste receptacle.
So I guess you're fudging it, okay. Okay, Councilmember Zoig Hauser, you can proceed.
Yeah, in any event, I think it would be not, I I agree with you, Matt. I I'm on totally the same page, but I think it would be nice to check with them to see if they would like a plaque. Another question is, as the liaison to the Communications Committee, will the directory be given to the Communications Committee to take a look at it and another proof before you send it out? I think that's what they had, that's what they're thinking is going to happen.
We've been talking to her.
That's perfect. Then I don't know with compost, and I see that Barton's online, I just I think we're at about half of the community is composting, isn't that right, Matt? Maybe even a little more? And it would be nice to try and get more people on board. They have a, the compost crew has a brand-new truck, which is much more pleasing than the old truck, and maybe if people see that going around, maybe they'll be more inclined to compost. So just some food for thought for people. And then in terms of the meeting with the with the public, yeah, for the police, I wondered if we wanted to wait until we have the Public Safety Committee set up.
No, we're not, we can't, we're not going to wait, because the Public Safety, we have some people involved with that, so.
I know a few people have mentioned to me that they would like to be on that committee, and they're anxious to serve.
Well, that's one of the reasons we're, one of the reasons I want to have it, which I mentioned to the council president, is because we we haven't had an adequate number of people apply, and I think if we have that meeting, which I've been promising to have for about six months, that some will and I'm also working with the who I'm proposing as the chair, so.
Oh, terrific. Great. And and when is, just as a refresher, when is the newcomers' party?
It's going to be, it's I thought Matt, I thought Matt communicated what happened to that, which was that so I recruited Phyllis Wiesenfelder to be the chair of the committee, and we have to find members, but one of the one of the conditions for her assuming the chairmanship was to her idea that we have this then in in January.
Oh, nice. Okay, great.
And then we're so so that's the answer. I thought Matt had communicated that. I'm sorry.
He may have, he may have, and I may just have missed it, but speaking of Phyllis, are will we be getting a report from that from her?
Yeah, yes, we're working on that. We're working on that. There's going to be a meeting. I'm working with them, so there's going to be a public meeting of the of the board.
Of the Board of Supervisors? Oh, that's perfect. That's great. Well, again, I just want to thank Matt and Linda for the detailed report. It was it was really impressive, and and it's hard to believe that with such a small staff that so much was getting done, so thank you both so very much.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Peel, do you have any questions?
Yes, I had a few follow-up questions on the police matter. I didn't hear you say, Matt, anything specific about the recent incidences in Chevy Chase Village and Friendship Heights, and I just wondered if you had been getting any specific advice from the Police Department as to, you know, what they expect this coming week, starting tomorrow, and whether what specific recommendations they might have for the town of Somerset? And then my follow-up point would be, you know, I I know we have a police presence in town with our off-duty officers that we, you know, engage directly, but I, you know, I'm not out walking a dog the way everybody else is, but you know, I don't really have a strong sense that we otherwise have much of a presence from the Montgomery County Police in town, and I just would be curious to know whether you have a sense about that.
That's why we're, that's why we want to have this meeting.
Well, I understand that, but the reason I'm asking about it tonight is that the meeting hasn't even been scheduled yet, and I'm talking about concerns I have for the immediate future, and I wondered if Matt could give us any information he might have, and it might be of interest to the people who dialed into the call tonight to find out what he's hearing, if anything, from the county police.
So just briefly, I don't have anything specifically related to election anxiety or election fallout. But the the vast majority of the crimes that are reported in Somerset are break-ins to cars, and the vast majority of those cases are unlocked cars. And in talking with the police officers, they they've indicated that of course, it's it's great to have police officers around, but the likelihood of having a police officer on duty at the right time, on the right street, at the right area on the street where somebody happens to be when it's typically a group of two or three people that are hopping out of their car, let me check that door, okay, that one's locked, let's try the next one. They can make it down one street in five minutes and then turn onto another street. So the 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 best thing that residents can do is to just double-check and always make sure your doors are locked. I asked our police officers to focus their hours on nighttime hours after we had that rash of car break-ins, just so that they're around, maybe their their visible presence will will be a deterrent. And since then, I'd say probably sixty percent of the hours that they've put in have been between the hours of ten o'clock, ten o'clock PM and two o'clock AM. That being said, if you recall earlier in October, there was the person that walked into the person's unlocked front door in broad daylight, so.
Right.
There there's there's no there's no bewitching hour that has a monopoly on people willing to to commit crimes like that. Then then just broadly in terms of overall police coverage, I that that is part of the reason we wanted to have this meeting is to to get some clarification. My understanding from them, and what I've heard from the police officers before, is that they have algorithms and formula that the way they allocate their their resources and their their man-hours is based on reported crimes, and so that's also why, not not to throw everything back on residents, but it is very important that even if you see your car was rifled through and thankfully nothing was taken, it's still important that you report that crime to the police so that it goes into their database, so that they say, wow, there were thirty, there there was a person that went through thirty cars or sixty cars or something in Somerset that week, so that it goes into their formula so that they know to put but put more police here. So that's that's a broad answer to, I think, a more specific question that you had. And hopefully that the police will be able to to answer more specifically for you when we have that meeting.
And it may not be too relevant for where we are, but I think there are some public safety concerns about the highways. I know that when my daughter and I were driving out to Germantown for soccer yesterday, you know, her teammates reported that there had been a sort of flotilla of trucks that were slowing down traffic on two seventy and preventing people from passing them on either side and and intentionally disturbing the traffic flow, and so I guess I just, you know, we again, it may not be relevant for Somerset itself, but I think it is relevant for Somerset residents to understand what's going on out there.
That's why you'll be able to ask the police.
Yeah, but I again, I don't think we in fact will have a chance to ask the police before this becomes relevant in the next few days. So anyway, I just wanted to ask Matt about it, but that was all, and I'm finished.
Thank you. Councilmember Circo.
No, nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Barr.
Well, I'll finish the question I started earlier. I am liaison to the audit committee, and Marnie is the alternate liaison. Please make sure if you're communicating with them that you include us in the emails that you do with the audit committee.
Okay, I'll I'll follow up this week, and I'll make sure that you guys are in the loop on that and included in any communications invited to any of those meetings.
Okay, thank you. We will now move to the seven fifty item. Hearing motion to consider approval of installation of elastomeric bearing pads under both downstream and upstream side-edge beams of town pool bridge to improve drainage on bridge as proposed by Masonry Resurfacing and Construction Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars, Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, I'll try to keep it brief because we all sort of know what the issue is there. We've got a a flat bridge that water pools on, and we put down some some paint last year that added some texture to it to make it less slippery, but the problem is the the water tends to pool so much that it pools even above the the grit that does that, and we had looked at, and and Councilmember Circo had done a little bit of research on different types of padding we could put down and things like that, and had some trouble getting a definitive answer on whether or not that would affect emergency vehicle accessibility to to the pool area, and so went back to company that put in the the bridge in the first place, and they they came by, we we met out there, and they are, they they said if we just lift the beams on the sides of the pool, it allows the water to fall off the edge. And so they they basically have given us two versions of the same proposal, kind of four different levels of it, and so one is to only do, only to lift the beam on the one side where the water pools a little bit more. The other is to lift the beams on both sides, and then you have an option to lift it one inch or one and a half inch. And in talking with Jill, who has graciously joined us this evening, I recommend that we just go ahead and lift it the one and a half inches, let as much water flow through, and that will also allow for more space in case any debris falls on there as well, so it's less likely to get gunk that fills it up. And even at the highest bid, we're still under budget to take care of this and hopefully have this issue behind us for winter. I'll turn it over to Jill if she has anything else to add. Jill, I think you can push star six if you're on a phone to unmute yourself.
Is that Jill Glasgow from Masonry? Yes, good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Sure. I, Matt, Matt did a great job of summarizing exactly what I I said to him. This bridge is very flat, and I think just being able to lift those edge beams will allow the water to go over the edge, you know, we, it's not a hundred percent guarantee, it's what I told him. But I don't really have any other, you know, non-destructive way of alleviating the water or trying to to minimize the ponding on there.
Well, thank you, and thank you for joining us at this late hour. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
Oh, well, I think this is really worth trying. I just have one quick question, which is if we ever decide we want to paint the bridge, we can do it a different color, right?
Is that, that's not to me.
Well, I mean, you guys installed a bridge that was painted green, which doesn't really go. Well, I mean, you guys installed a bridge that was painted green, which doesn't really go with our pool house, so I was just thinking ahead. It's okay. Is that right? Doesn't matter.
I don't know what would ha- I think you can probably paint it. That was, you know, that you can paint it whatever you would like.
Well, yeah, if you could, it'd be, thank you so much for the answer, Jill, if you could, if you could get back to to us, we appreciate it. Is that your only question, Council President Shaw?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers Zuykhauser.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Peele.
No questions.
Thank you, Councilor Circo.
I just thought that we have a positive way forward here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Barr.
No questions. I just feel.
Who works? Mr. Town Manager, are there, has anyone raised their hand among our?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, uh, Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
I move that we consider, we approve the installation of the elastomeric bearing pads um, on the town pool bridge to improve drainage on the bridge uh, with the contract uh with Masonry Resurfacing and Construction Inc. in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Thank you. Is there a second? I see Zuykhauser. Thank you. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you, and thank you very much, Jill, for uh, joining us tonight. We appreciate it.
What question? When when are you gonna start?
Uh, as soon as, I I'll I'll talk to Matt about that, and once he sends me back the signed proposal, we'll put you on our schedule.
You you will be able to do it before winter sets in? That's been the big complaint from our residents.
We hope, we 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 hope to be able to, you know, we're busy right now, but we should be able to to squeeze this in.
How many days does it take you to do this?
Uh, probably just two or three, three, well, each side to, you know, a couple of days on each side for each beam.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item, hearing motion to consider approval of the fall tree planting schedule is recommended by the town arborist and approved by the Parks and Natural Resources Committee. And there is a list of thirteen trees, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you. Uh, I will turn it over to Tolbert and only say for myself that uh Tolbert put this list together back in late September and has been working with the Parks and Natural Resources Committee to finalize that. We did get a couple of comments from residents. One of the, one of the uh, one of the trees was taken off in response to um, in response to a resident's question.
Is it, is it listed here?
It's, so it's no longer listed. So it's 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 been amended to take off the the tree and question. Uh, then there was another one, um, Tolbert, where a resident had um, indicated that they would prefer to not have a tree. Um, and
Surrey, fifty eight oh four Surrey.
At fifty eight oh four Surrey. Um, and I'll 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 let Dr. Feather um, give his explanation, but he he has said that it is a prime location for for uh, a town tree, so um. So that Tolbert.
There there's thirteen entries or thirteen different trees, but there's actually fifteen total trees because some of them have two, two trees per property. So it's it's fifteen trees. Um, and um, we worked with the uh, the Park Natural Resources Committee uh, pretty closely and a- actually took some of their suggestions for for locations. And also Stadler, we uh bid this out with Stadler, and the price is six thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars to supply and install. And also, they've already scheduled for Thursday, November twelfth, so next week, if it's approved. And um, that's that's my report. Thank you, sir. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions? Thank you. Councilmember Zuykhauser. You're muted. You you have no questions?
Uh, no questions. I'm I'm excited about this. Thank you, Dr. Feather.
You're welcome. Councilmember Peele.
I don't think I have any questions for Dr. Feather tonight, but I guess I'd just like to put a pin in this for when we get the PNRC tree, you know, tree policy proposal, because I feel like we we kind of float back and forth on this from year to year when people say they don't want a tree. And I, for one, would like to have a better, you know, a better policy for it so that we can be as objective as possible. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Circo.
Uh, just, I I think I'd like to second what Franny said, that I think it's important for us to have a clear policy. I'm looking forward to the PNRC recommendation.
Thank you, Councilmember Barr.
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest indicated they wish to speak?
Not at this time, nope.
Okay, thank you. Council, uh, when when you make your motion, Mr. Town Attorney, should the these exact number of trees be enumerated since Dr. Feather mentioned it? It was fifteen and not thirteen?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, uh, I move that we approve of the fall Trent uh, fall tree planting schedule as noted on the agenda of November two for fifteen trees on thirteen properties in the amount of six thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there discussion of Shaw? Shaw seconded. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed. Thank you. Next item, hearing motion to consider approval of a tree removal permit by Laura Applebaum on behalf of the estate of Sheldon Cohen and accompanying reforestation plan of five ornamental trees at fifty five eighteen Trent Street as recommended by the town arborist. The trees requested for removal are all listed on the agenda. Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I actually thought that the resident was going to join us, but it looks like um, they're not here this evening. Um, they submitted an application to us that was included in your packet for the removal of eleven trees. Uh, some of them are not um, uh, some of them are are hazardous and and unhealthy, and then others are um, close to the house. Uh, and Dr. Feather put together his recommendations for removal and reforestation. I'll turn it over to Dr. Feather for any further comments.
Um, okay, I met with Ms. Applebaum, um, I think like ten days ago on the property. And um, her mother had planted a lot of um Bradford pears around the house, and they're were all reaching maturity at this point. And I think some of them near the house, a couple of them were actually probably seeded by birds. Um, but there were two trees, a tilia and a Bradford pear, rather large, that are right up against the foundation. And um, then there were two, four, like five trees in the backyard that are kind of lean, you can see in the photographs, they're leaning over the yard. And as these get big, they start splitting apart, so um, pretty, pretty much all the trees she wanted to take down had a reason to come down. And um, the the property is um, the backyard's small. Um, and they do have a, one of the largest black gums in town, in the area, in the front yard on Trent. The tree on that house is this beautiful black gum tree. So um, it, the the lot is canopied, and what we discussed and she proposed, and I agreed, was um, they're thinking maybe putting a water garden in the back because of the, how much water they get in the back, and then including trees with that. And um, she was thinking maybe, and I agree, five trees would maybe fit on the property in the back, four in the back and one in the front, and probably smaller trees, ornamental trees or trees that soak up water, maybe river birch or something like that. She didn't have a plan. Her other idea is she's not gonna plant anything this year because of the periodic cicadas. Um, so she was gonna defer till, I guess, fall of next year, of a year from now. So what I'm proposing is to let her take down all eleven trees, have her pay a bond for five trees that she would replace and loom for twenty-five hundred dollars. Thank you. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions? Councilor Zuykhauser.
Yeah, Dr. Feather, so there's one canopy tree, you say a large black gum in the front yard?
Yeah.
In the backyard, after all these trees are taken down, will will there be any trees?
There, the the there, the neighboring yard has canopy trees, so the yard in back. It it's a very tight, um, s- small, narrow yard. And so the 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 houses kind of almost face each other or back each other there. So there are some canopy trees in the back.
In the back that belong to other?
That belong to other, and the the owner in the back, yes.
So, but but given what we were just just speaking about, the black gum that's going in on Surrey, and I imagine the the canopy trees on the neighboring yards are probably pretty old. This is a question, and I have no idea, but it is a question. Would it not make sense to put in a small canopy tree in the backyard? Because eventually the neighboring
Yes.
trees will will decline, and then all we'll have is some
Small.
ornamental tree. So is there any way that you might consider putting in a canopy tree? And maybe one or two ornamental trees in her backyard instead?
Well, you might go with um, you know, just switching out one canopy tree for the four, and still have four ornamental trees. Because there there is room in front for ornamental trees as well, so.
Would you, would you consider that recommendation?
Yes, I that I I I think you have a good point, so. Um, and then to give her the option, maybe um, back or there's also maybe, well, they're not really. The canopy tree would need to go in the back corner, probably. Um, be the northwest corner.
So what would you think? One canopy tree and four ornamental trees?
I think so.
Great. Many, thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Councilor Peele.
I do have a question for Dr. Feather that was brought up by this application. Should we be considering the cicadas for our planting?
Um, what, my, everybody's asking that, and we we source our trees locally uh, within the, within the region of the cicada. So all you're doing is just kind of deferring the, you know, you're gonna bring in damaged trees the next year anyway. Uh, that would have this.
I don't think I understand.
Well, that, we're sourcing from nurseries that are also have the periodic cicada, so they're local nurseries. So they're all, those trees in the nursery are also getting damaged. So, I mean, you're you're just waiting a year and bringing trees that are gonna have the same kind of damage. So, and we've, I, we've planted in the past, uh, the seventeen years ago in town in Chevy Chase, and there is some damage, but I think there's actually less damage when it's planted in the street than it's in rows in the nursery. So, and it can be pruned out. Most of the time, it's it's easy to deal with. And then also, what's interesting is the the nursery damage you'll see maybe two or three years in, you can still see where they've laid eggs in the, in the stems.
Well, then in that case, I guess my question is, why are we permitting this resident to wait another year to put the trees in if if it's not gonna be like there's a big, you know, big reason.
It's her, I mean, it's her bond. So, I mean, she's gonna have the bond up for a whole year. So, I mean, that's, to me, that's the.
Well, I know that's true, except that I thought we sort of were trying to encourage people to kind of close those things out promptly. But anyway, I I don't know if I feel strongly about it. It just seems to me like, you know, the next person who comes in might say the same thing, and
Apparently she had a very bad experience the last time, so. And I, you know, who knows why, but um, she blamed it on the cicadas, so.
Okay, okay. It just means that, you know.
I was trying to convince her to plant sooner too, but she wouldn't.
Yeah, I mean, it just means we have to sort of keep it on our our list for another year, but in any event. All right, that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Circo.
No, no comments, questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Barr.
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest indicated they would like to speak?
Uh, well, actually, some somebody uh asked a question and said, does the town uh, warranty from Stadler cover damage from cicadas?
No, it won't. It'd cover other things. I mean, if the tree doesn't survive, uh, cicadas don't really kill a tree. They just damage a tree. And all they're doing is, they're laying, they're laying their eggs. They have an oviposter that actually slices the stem and lays an egg inside the stem. And then the stem dies and the eggs are in it, and the stem falls off and goes to the ground, and then the eggs hatch in the ground. So it's just the tips of branches. It's like if you took a pruning shear and just tipped the whole tree is is the the damage that they do. They don't really kill a tree. Or a tree that we're planting, you know, that it's, they don't, they only go in something maybe as big as your index finger, nothing bigger. Okay, thank you. Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yes, I move that we approve of the tree removal for the eleven trees. Uh, as noted in Dr. Feather's report dated October twenty-eight at fifty five eighteen Trent Street. However, uh, that the reforestation plan be changed to one canopy tree and four ornamental trees.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? I see Shaw. Thank you. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Feather.
Good night.
Yeah. Next item, hearing motion to consider approval of online tennis court reservation system through Game Time software. In the amount of three hundred and sixty dollars is recommended by the Tennis Committee, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So um, the first uh, recommendation from the Tennis Committee was for um, a reservation system through a software called Game Time. Uh, the Tennis Committee looked at a couple of different options, and this was the the cheaper of the two options and uh, fit all of their criteria that they were looking for. It was easy to use. It was able to book doubles and singles and um, also uh, had the added benefit of requiring a registration for that you needed to to get by paying your tennis dues. So it made it um, made it easier for us to track and to only give permission to those who have paid their tennis dues. Um, uh, this passed unanimously by the Tennis Committee and uh, I think you have an email from the Tennis Chair uh, on the recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions? Councilmember Zuykhauser.
No.
Councilor Peele.
Yes, I just wanted to mention that I was um, at the Tennis Committee meeting when they discussed this, and the um, early rollout, but you know, before tonight's meeting, I was intended to try to grab tennis players this fall while people were still playing tennis to see how the uh, reservation system might work in reality. So um, I think it's a good, a good system, and I'm glad we're gonna do it.
Thank you, Councilmember Circo.
No comments.
Councilor Barr.
Uh, no comments either.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there, has any resident or guest indicated they would like to speak?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Uh, Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
I can make the motion. I we, I'd like to move that we approve the three hundred and sixty dollar purchase of a tennis reservation software system.
I'll second.
I see Barr was first. Thank you. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed. Next item.
All those opposed. Next item, hearing motion to consider approval of tennis ball recycling program, including the purchase of a tennis ball recycling bin in the amount of $214 from recycled balls as recommended by the Tennis Committee, Mr. Town Manager.
So this is the second recommendation from the Tennis Committee. This will also come out of the budgeted funds for the tennis court this year. They found a program from a company that is based out of, I think Burlington, Vermont, that recycles ten rubber tennis balls and turns it into reusable surfaces for tennis courts throughout the country. And I believe it's a five oh one C three non nonprofit organization. So it's $189. It's it's basically just a a bin where people can put in old tennis balls. And there's a $25 delivery charge. So it comes to two hundred and what, $214, I think, altogether.
Thank you, Council. President Shaw, do you have any questions?
This is actually for Ron. Do we need to change the code to not have to approve small dollar items like this? I know Steve Circo wondered whether we could not have to, when there's a budget for a committee, whether whether the council has to approve these very small items.
Well, generally, under state law, when you do your annual levy, you're appropriating funds to specific purposes. Once that appropriation has been made, expenditures are allowed in accordance with that appropriation. So you 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 don't need a a separate motion on every expenditure chart that has already been appropriated. But, you know, if it's a recommendation from a committee, then it is your your current practice, as I understand it, to approve that. Because that expenditure is not being made by the manager or mayor in accordance with your budget. But I mean, it's something that that could be addressed in operating procedures.
I please, this item is not in the budget. There's an appropriation for tennis funds. There's no specific.
There's nothing specific for this. I just wanted to raise it. I don't have any question.
Full committee and every other committee. We have council approval. So and questions have been asked in the past, why is money spent on things without council approval? So if the council wants to change the code, fine. But in the meantime, all these items have to come to the council. Councilmember Zoyk has, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Peele.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to mention that I I have right now, my dad is at our house. And I asked him whether he had these, and he said, all the clubs have these. So I'm glad that we're taking a look at this tonight and considering ratifying it.
Thank you, Councilmember Circo.
Uh, no, I'm I'm glad to support this recycling program. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Barr.
Yeah, well, the only group who might object are family pets who could lose their favorite playthings. But I think nevertheless, it is a very useful thing, and so I fully approve it.
Thank you, Council. Mr. Town Manager, have any resident or guest indicate they would like to speak?
No.
Thank you. Counselor, prepared to make a motion?
I can make the motion again that we ratify the purchase of the recycling bin for $214.
Thank you. Is there a second? I saw Shaw. Thank you. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
I'm so sorry. It's Carrie Wofford. We had a child crisis. I'm so sorry.
Okay.
We've already approved.
Item.
Okay.
Thank you. Next item would be the discussion, the quarterly budget report presented by the Town Budget Committee. I will turn it over to the liaisons and the Chair. Which is Council President Shaw, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, it is. Well, I'm happy to turn it over to Phil, not to waste any time here. And and my thanks to the Budget Committee for its excellent work, along with Matt, of course.
Okay, Phil Young here. Before I get started, I'd just like to thank the Town Manager, Matt Trolinger, for all his help in collecting the data and coordinating the necessary the meetings necessary to prepare this first ever quarterly analysis of the Somerset Town Budget. The work could also not have been done without the invaluable help and advice from Council President Marnie Shaw and Councilmember Robin Barr, as well as the other two members of the Budget Committee, John Medalia and Ann Kelly Bolton. And last, but certainly not least, I'd like to thank our mayor for his help, especially in arranging a meeting with the State Comptroller Peter Franchot to discuss the implications of COVID-19 for our town budget. So let me get started by giving you the bottom line. We don't have any new information at this point to indicate that we should either tighten or relax the austerity budget adopted earlier this year when the pandemic broke out. Tax revenue volatility remains a feature of Somerset's budget, which makes it hard to accurately forecast revenues. Matt, could you display on on the screen the State Comptroller's chart showing the average adjusted gross income volatility? Does everybody see that on their screen now?
Volatility, one, that's the projection of the variability. Okay. Forecast.
We want it goes from 2004 to 2018. This is history.
Let me see if I.
Sorry. To that PDF file from the State Comptroller's Office, Matt.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, let me let me go on for now. We can come back to that. Uh, once it, once it comes up, just let me know, Matt. Complicating matters, the future path of the economy remains highly uncertain, suggesting that a continued cautious path forward is warranted in order to reach our long term rainy day fund goal of the equivalent of twelve months operating expenditures and reserves. At the end of the last fiscal year, we stood at nine months equivalent. Those these reserves are needed to cover us against the volatility of revenues and protect the financial well being of Somerset. Now, turning to volatility a little bit, the next chart. And Matt, could you display chart one from my file?
Yeah, here we go. Oh.
Which one?
Sorry, it's being slow on me.
It's okay.
I do have the, I do have the other chart available for you now.
Okay, why don't you bring it up and let's take a look at it?
Sorry, there we go. There, finally.
Okay, great. So that chart is very interesting. The green line at the top is Somerset's adjusted gross income by tax year. And the orange line in the middle is Montgomery County. And the blue line at the bottom is statewide. And you can just see immediately how much more volatile Somerset's income tax revenues are than than either state or county wide. Okay, now, in light of that volatility, Matt, can you display chart one from my file?
Yes.
That just graphically demonstrates the magnitude and implications of this volatility. We are presently budgeting for a four percent decline in income tax revenues in this fiscal year, fiscal year 2021. A loss of just.
Is that the right chart?
No.
Okay, I'll wait for the chart to come up.
It's the one you had first, Matt, I think.
Yeah.
I never could do any of this, so it's good that you can manage to share screens and move things around.
Sorry, I yeah, it's all I'm 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 having a, I'm just being slow, kind of jumping back and forth. Sorry about that, Phil.
That's okay. Don't worry. I'll just make the point anyway so that we don't lose too much time. So I was saying, if we have a four percent decline in income tax revenues, we lose $50,000. But you just saw the volatility of our income tax revenues. If they were to fall by 25%, that would be a loss of over $300,000. And in a worst case scenario, which is not out of the realm of possibility, we saw it happen in fiscal year 2010. A 50% drop would result in a loss of over $600,000. With no other action, that would wipe out about 60% of our rainy day fund. As Governor Hogan has said, we should continue to plan for the worst case scenario, build up our reserves, and if developments do turn out to be more favorable than planned, then we will have a good reserve cushion to meet our repressed spending needs. Now, let me say a word or two about forecasting difficulties. The pandemic is something that we haven't seen in recent history. However, forecasting relies on historical patterns. This makes it very difficult to forecast budget developments with a high degree of precision. Though caused by different factors, it is still interesting to consider the Great Recession, which began in December 2007. In this case, it wasn't until fiscal year 2010 that income tax revenues fell by almost half. A lag of over two years. As just noted, the volatility of Somerset's income is very high, much higher than the Sater County. This means our forecasts have a much wider confidence interval. The best strategy is to plan ahead and build buffers to deal with this uncertainty. So let me, let me now turn to some budget details. On the revenue side, in the first quarter, actually, the first four months of the year, we had, we have no significant income tax revenues in the first four months. That's normal. So the November data will be the first key month, and we don't, we obviously don't have that yet. Property tax revenues, which account for about one third of our total revenues, grew by 4.8% in the first quarter over the corresponding period a year ago. So far, so good on that front. On the expenditure side, operational expenditures in the first quarter were 29% of budgeted annual expenditures. Sidewalk repair is the main reason why this number is more than one fourth. Capital expenditures were very small, only about $3,000. Last year's out term left us with an additional $131,000 of reserves over what we had projected in May to begin this fiscal year, mainly due to unused contingency funds. So Matt, if you could display table one now.
And you got it.
Okay, it's a great. So we're already planning to spend $15,000 of this amount, money that was not in the original austerity budget, leaving us with 116,000 additional reserves. The council could consider spending some of these additional reserves for high priority critical needs. However, the Budget Committee would still recommend saving the large majority of these reserves to augment our reserve position and protect us against future volatility. We are far from out of the woods yet. Let me give you just a quick summary of our meeting with the State Comptroller's Office. We met with Comptroller Franchot, as I mentioned, thanks to the mayor and two of his staff last Tuesday, just six days ago. They expressed considerable doom and gloom regarding the economic situation. Their strong advice was to plan for the worst and build buffers. The latest COVID dashboard for Montgomery County shows a rising infection rate and a high to very high risk of transmission. A second wave is likely, and it could be strong. This carries big risks for income tax revenues, our largest revenue source. A key point that the State Comptroller's Office made was the importance of the second stimulus package from the federal government. The comptroller noted that if we don't get the second stimulus, we're up the creek without a paddle, quote unquote. Much of Maryland's and also of Somerset's economic well being will depend on this package being substantial. And as I'm sure you're you're well aware, nobody has agreed on this package yet. They're still negotiating it. The three main factors affect affecting income tax revenue are earned income, retirement income, and capital gains. Based on news reports, higher income earners have suffered relatively smaller earnings losses than lower income earners and are recovering more quickly, the so called K recovery. However, the income of many Somerset residents also likely includes capital gains. And the market is very volatile these days. A sharp downturn, especially if it's extended, could lead to a large loss of tax revenue for Somerset. Also, the tax law now allows retirees to not take their required minimum distributions in 2020. This will reduce taxable income for retirees, at least for the near future. So in conclusion, I would repeat that we should continue to plan for some tough times and build up our reserves. If developments turn out to be more favorable than projected, we will have a good reserve cushion to meet our delayed spending needs. Now is not the time to loosen the budget reins. Some of those delayed spending needs include two large looming and uncertain in size liabilities that we need to be able to pay for, namely potential costly repairs to the pool and road maintenance, only underscoring the need for an ample reserve cushion. Thank you. Any questions?
Council President Shaw, did you want to add anything? Okay, thank you, Councilmember Zoyk has, do you have any questions? The.
You're muted, Barbara.
You don't.
The the one thing I will.
Thank you.
I shouldn't be anymore that. You know what? We've had so much precipitation this fall that I truly worry about the winter. And if the precipitation continues and we get a lot of snow, that in and of itself is very costly for the town to clear the sidewalks in the street. So I ask all council members to keep that in mind as well.
Is it?
That's it.
Thank you, Councilor Peele.
I don't have any questions tonight. Thank you for the report.
Thank you, Councilmember Circo.
Yep, just second that. Thank you for the report. Excellent. No, no questions or comments.
Thank you, Councilor Barr.
Yeah, this is really to get the difference between fiscal year 21 and 22, because I think that 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 is important. The current, the year we're in, and the one is fiscal year 21, most of our income tax revenue comes from tax year and calendar year 2019. That is going into our fiscal year 21. Nineteen, of course, is pre pandemic. So we should have a pretty good year actually in 21. Fiscal year 22 is when we have the fiscal, the calendar year 20 revenues coming in. And that's the problem year. That's this year. So what we're likely to see is we're doing okay in fiscal year 21, and we will have money in fiscal year 21. That's the year here. We shouldn't think we're okay necessarily. We've got to look ahead to what was 2020 like to forecast 22 and understand whether we're going to see major losses in 22, and that's that's what we're going to be aware of.
Okay, thank you. Before we move on, perhaps, I know this is just a discussion item, but perhaps there, since we have, we're a little bit. I don't want to take up a lot of time, but perhaps a resident has or guests has a comment or question?
I didn't receive any comments or questions.
Okay, thank you. Well, I want to congratulate, yes, Council President Shaw, did you want to say something? You're muted. You're muted.
I know we've been warned not to get giddy about the fact that we're doing okay right now. But I do want to sort of echo something Matt raised earlier, which is I I think we really, the one thing I think we might want to. I think we really, the one thing I think we might want to invest in is the website. That wouldn't take all of the money that Phil was talking about that we had as, as a little extra leftover from FY20. But it would be, I think, a really good investment. I don't think we can wait till next year to make improvements in, in the website. So I just want to kind of plant that idea.
We, we will talk about that at our meeting with Matt next week. Thank you. I think John Medallia had the, wanted to have the last word.
Um, yeah, I second Marnie's suggestion on the website, and it's not 20,000 because extra, because we've already budgeted, I believe, 4,200. But what I wanted to say is just three quick things. First of all, of course, as always, Phil Young has really taken the lead and done a remarkable job, as always. Second, of course, it is a possibility that things will get better, but, but, you know, we do need to plan for a worst case. Also, following up on what Robin said, it's also possible that calendar year '21 will be a problem. So, you know, that emphasizes what Phil said about planning for a worst case. Over.
'23?
Thank you.
'23, John?
No, I was talking about calendar year, next, next calendar year.
Okay, thank you very much. And again, to our outstanding Budget Committee. Job continuing well done, and we will look forward to your report in the next quarter. The next item, hearing motion to adopt a charter for the town budget committee. Madam President, I believe this is yours. You need to unmute.
Yeah. As everyone knows, each, each committee is working on a charter. The work session discussed this charter that the Budget Committee has, and I don't think anybody had any additional suggestions. Our attorney reviewed it before it went to the work session.
Thank you. Councilmember Zueg Hauser, do you have any questions? Thank you. Counselor Peel.
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Circo.
No questions.
Counselor Bar.
No questions.
Thank you. Are there, Mr. Town Manager, are there comments or questions from our residents or guests?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Hearing none. Madam President, you're prepared to make a motion?
Yes, I move the council adopt the Budget Committee Charter.
Thank you. Is there a second? I see Zueg Hauser. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed. Thank you very much. The next item, hearing motion to adopt a charter for the Town Committee on Equity and Inclusion, which I believe this is Councilmember Bar's project.
Right, yep. This, so this one was, I tentatively named the Diversity Committee when we discussed it at the work session. It's now named the Equity and Inclusion Committee, which will be, it's, it's name as proposed and voted on. It is, it is still largely, as I discussed at the working, at the work session, it's been sharpened a bit after Jeffrey managed to send it to a couple of members of, which committee was it?
You know, that is, that is the staff at the National League of Cities.
Thank you.
Where there is a similar, there's a similar committee, and there are similar committees to this, and I applaud Counselor Bar's initiative here. And so the staff of that, the staff for that committee, which is an expert in this area, reviewed the outstanding draft that Counselor Bar introduced and made some com, you tweaked it. And I would also like to point out that Tacoma Park Mayor Kate Stewart happens to be the national chair of that committee. So we're in good company. So thank you for, we will thank that, those people for helping us, and I applaud you for your efforts.
Right. So anyway, as, as there are three elements, and one, one is, we're looking for their recommendations for any changes we want to make in our town business and activities related to equity and inclusion. Next element is looking at the history of the town residences and understanding what forces have shaped the diversity and of our current residents or the like of diversity of our current residents. And the third element is, is I'll get, see whether they want to recommend that we actually advocate for more equity and inclusion in other government, particularly county and state government, around issues such as policing or housing or other issues connected with the state. So those are the three major parts of the committee. It is a new committee, of course. The, it is, as I mentioned at the work session, planned originally for two years. It's really to see whether they can do it, whether they can actually make progress in those two years. And if they think they're, they're going ahead, then let's, we can vote on it for being a more permanent committee after those two years. It is meant to be very interactive with the town, so there is a real requirement to have town forums in it so that there is, is good input from town residents on it. And that's, that's a very quick summary. Thank you. And I did write it up in the Town Journal for...
Thank you very much. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions? Counselor Zueg Hauser. Counselor Peel.
No questions.
Counselor Circo.
No questions.
Councilmember, oh, that's it. Okay. Mr. Town Manager, are there comments or questions from our residents or guests?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, you're prepared to make a motion?
I am recommending that we form an Equity and Inclusion Committee as described.
Thank you. Is there, is there a second? Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? And I take it now that Counselor Bar, you will work with the town manager on writing up some kind of advertisement for the members of the committee? And what, what you, so we will start publicizing that per your suggestion, and hopefully I can, there are a number of people, you know, over the last 18 months that have, that, I've kept all their names, so I'll get back to them. But I would also like to have the manager invite others to express an interest.
Certainly, I'll, I'll work with Matt on that, yeah.
And one of the reasons why I've also been holding back a little bit of the Public Safety Committee is that there's a lot of inner, you know, collaboration that I can anticipate between the two committees. And so there's some people that might have volunteered for the Public Safety Committee that might prefer to be on this committee. So, so we will get moving on that. So hopefully, hopefully, I'll have the Public Safety Committee for December and this committee maybe for December, but more than likely for January, but maybe for December. Let's see how it goes with the advertising. Okay, thank you. So before we adjourn, I think that Counselor Circo had requested the floor.
Thank you very much, Jeffrey. Yes. So you, folks may have seen some informal communications on listserv or other correspondence about the Environment Committee's recommendation to ban gas-powered leaf blowers. I've been working closely with the, with the committee as, as the council's liaison, and I'd like to bring their proposal forward, but we have time with their proposal. And I know that the council would like to give this solid consideration. So what I'd, what I'd like to do is request council approval to engage the town lawyer to help us just draft some draft legislation, so that when I introduce the proposal next month, we'll have a specific piece of legislation to start to refer to as we discuss things further. Does that sound good?
So, Mr. Town Attorney, can you make a recommendation on how this should proceed?
Sure. So, yeah, under, under current protocol, in order to engage my time, because my time costs money for the town, the request has to be made by the manager, the mayor, or the majority of the council. And so it would be appropriate to have a motion by the council to vote on whether I should be engaged to draft that ordinance for your consideration at the next meeting.
All right, so Counsel, so Counselmember Circo, would you like to make a motion?
So I move that we engage the services of our town lawyer to help the Environment Committee draft a proposed legislation to ban gas-powered leaf blowers.
I'll second it.
Bar, second. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? I think Marnie had discussion.
Yes, I wanted to ask whether it could be, a draft could be ready in time for the work session so that the council could talk about the draft before it goes to the next council meeting for introduction?
Mr. Town Attorney, is that possible? The meeting is, can you...
It's, it is November 16th.
Is that possible?
That should be plenty of time, anticipating that the proposal's not going to be that complex.
Right. That, that's, that's great. Perfect. Look forward to it.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed. Okay, thank you. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, everybody. Happy voting. See you all on the...
The other side.
On the 16th at 5:00 PM.
Yes, and we have three items. Can I just say that, three items, then? We're going to talk about the gas-powered leaf blower ban. We have a new version of what used to be called the Welcome Letter, but which is now more like a guide for building permits in Somerset. And then the third thing is to go back to the code.
So...
And President Shaw, may I make a quick comment?
Yes, please.
So, you know, I have given you my advice on what I think the legislative process should be, but, you know, as the mayor's correctly pointed out to me, the code is subject to interpretation. So it might be something that the council wants to address, perhaps with a resolution, so that you adopt a formal process that everybody agrees to will apply going forward with respect to the legislative process.
Do you want to help us out with that, Ron?
Sure, yeah, I could draft something for the work session.
That'd be, that would be very, very helpful, I think.
All right.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody. See you.
When I'm going to send, Matt, I will send out the material for the Town at Chevy Chase meeting, so you don't have to do that. If anybody wants to go to the meeting with me on Zoom, I would love company. And please read their attachment. It's really good.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Good night.
Good night.